Sorry, Madam Clerk, could you please re-thrown?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind. Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Welper.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, convene. Chief.
DeAndrelka, Waterloo Chief of Police. I asked for this work session because I wanted to rehash some old matters that we've discussed in regard to automatic traffic enforcement and also cover some new ground. I did send out a request for qualifications to two companies that provide these services in Iowa. My staff reviewed the qualifications that came back and we've identified GATSO as a company that we'd like to work with. Initially, we had, we have 13 intersections in the city of Waterloo where we have crash data that shows that we have a, would indicate a problem of red light violations. First of all, when it comes to enforcement for red light violations, I only want to utilize this tool where I can articulate and prove we have an issue with driving. My initial plan, as I told the council, was I'd like to put red light enforcement at about six of these intersections. I'd still like to proceed with that plan, so I've been working on an ordinance that is basically virtually the same as Cedar Rapids ordinance. The company that we'd like to work with is the same company that Cedar Rapids utilizes, and there are many reasons why we would like to work with that company. One of them is for the appeals process. Cedar Rapids is exploring a new appeals process. I would like to work with them on a joint venture for hearing the appeals on these matters. I've also, I've heard from many citizens on this, both sides of the issue. Some have suggested that we also consider speed enforcement. The ordinance that I would ultimately like to present to the council, and that's why I'm here today for this work session, is I would like your feedback. The ordinance would allow speed enforcement. However, I'm not necessarily a fan of stationary speed enforcement. GATSO, the company that we would like to work with, has a handheld unit. That is a unit that the officers can hold to engage in automatic traffic enforcement. They also offer a trailer that can be moved around throughout the city. And the city gets to establish the policy for how these tools are used. We get a lot of complaints in school zones, and we get a lot of complaints from citizens about speeding in their, in their neighborhoods. This speed trailer would be a perfect tool for areas such as that. We did have a speed trailer in the past. We didn't use it for automatic traffic enforcement, of course, because we don't have an ordinance to support it, but we obtained this trailer through a grant, and we had it for less than a year, and a drunk driver hit it, and this drunk driver had no insurance, so we no longer have a speed trailer. The speed trailer that this, that GATSO would provide, would provide, it would show citizens how fast they're going, but it would also have the ability to issue a citation. Again, these citations don't go on your driving record, but they do provide a punitive penalty for people who are speeding. GATSO is on their way here, the representative is on their way here. I anticipate he'll be here before this work session ends, but more than anything, I'm here to entertain your questions, and then that would allow me to decide how I should proceed with this issue. Everybody, I've, I've heard comments from citizens that, and this is a safety issue. Many citi, not many, some, the citizens that are against this type of initiative and program like to say it's all about the revenue. I'm not going to ignore the fact that these programs do generate revenue, but as I've said in the past, I would like to, if, if any revenue, if we do proceed with this program, any revenue that's generated, I would like, I would suggest we use it for tax relief, maybe some more officers, but put, this program is a good tool that fills a void that's currently occurring in the state of Iowa across the board. Due to court cost and some of the fines that the state legislature has required of us to issue to persons who are speeding, so, the officers are human. Whether some people believe it or not, the officers are human. And when they stop that guy on the way to a meatpacking plant who's only making 12 bucks an hour for going 11 miles per hour with the speed limit, and they gotta decide whether they're gonna issue a speeding ticket for nearly 200 bucks, that's tough. It's hard to do. This will help fill a void that's wide open, because we do need to enforce the speeding laws, but in some situations, it's hard for the officers to be issuing a person that citation. That's the brutal reality of what's occurring in state after state after state with some of our fines. The officers aren't being remiss in their duties, but they also try to be compassionate. And as part of discretion, they're allowed to issue verbal warning. We're seeing a lot more verbal warnings being issued now than we saw five to 10 years ago. And I, the, the biggest problem, in my opinion, is the price of some of the fines that the state requires of us and the court costs associated with them.
Mr. Mayor. Director, DeAndrelka, why, why do we want to have the speed mentioned in the ordinance? Isn't that gonna kind of dilute it a little bit or make the people that don't want? I'm fully favor the red light, but if we put speed in there, then you're gonna, you know, upset the apple cart a little bit with some people? Or is it just easier to have it in there now so we don't have to add it later? Could we add it later? We could, couldn't we?
You could add it later. What's interesting is one citizen in particular I heard from, he said he doesn't like automatic traffic enforcement at all, but if we're gonna introduce it through red light cameras, he suggests that get speed cameras in there as well. I do like, like I said, I'm not a fan of stationary speed cameras. I do like the ability of the officer to see that violation, use a handheld device to verify that violation, and then have a citation. But one nice thing about it is that it does, throughout the country, there are controversial acts occurring where officers end up using force. At least if the officer doesn't, I don't know how to put this, but if, it's a simple process and it negates that use, if there's no contact, there's no, no force is gonna have to be used at all. And what I, this, what's interesting is a, having a partnership with a private company, they've come up with so many ways to make this process easy and simple. Even a guy like me, who hasn't written a ticket in years, can sit on the overpass at Green Hill in 218. I can, in two hours, probably two hours, I can be trained on the lighter unit, the radar unit that's utilized, and even I can sit up there and have citations issued for people who are going 15 miles over the speed limit. Fifty, I say 50 miles per hour because that was always my personal threshold when I would write speeding tickets. And recently, I've been going out and stopping cars for speeding, and on 218, coming into the city from the north, it's like shooting fish out of a barrel. And we have a problem in our community with aggressive driving, and it's not just in Waterloo. It's across the country. What's interesting is I was at the police memorial event in Washington DC recently, and I used Uber and Lyft to go everywhere, and it was amazing how cautiously these drivers were driving. And then I asked them, I says, why you, you know, the speed limit's 55, why don't you go at least 62? And they all told me, speed cameras. It does impact the driving of the motoring public. It does make communities safer, so I think it is a good tool for our community. We've been successful in driving crash rates down in Waterloo, but I want to drive them down further. Every year, we have fatalities. It would be nice if we could go a whole year without a traffic fatality. And the biggest reasons for our fatalities are speeding, aggressive driving, drunk driving, no seat belts. This would impact aggressive driving and speeding, of course.
Is a handheld one, this same ticket?
Yes.
It's not, it's not a state ticket? It's a?
Correct. Correct. And the one thing I would like to combine with our database is the serial offenders. Those cars who are registered, the people that are serial offenders, I'd like us, the police department, to come up with a process to enter their data into our local law enforcement database so that if an officer ultimately does stop that car for a traffic violation, they can use the serial driving offenses as part of their discretion, whether to cite this person or not.
And I like your idea about tax relief and offset someplace, or, because you know I'm a fan of maybe hiring a few more officers or paying for those officers.
Well, and I've always said, you know, yes, I would like more cops. Quite frankly and honestly, I could use three more officers and I could use a clerical person at the task force. But I've also said, in the budget process, I also told the entire council, let's get this program up and running, and once the money's in the bank, let's see how much is there. And I'll even go further and say if that money ever dries up, if that revenue ever dries up because of changes in state law, well, guess what? Then we lose those positions. But yes, tax relief as well. And it fits, interestingly, this program, in my opinion, nicely fits the strategic plans of Waterloo, including tax relief.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Chief DeAndrelka, a couple things. The Federal Highway Administration, they did a study back in 2005 or sent something out, and it had to do with an analysis of the red light camera system, and what it, what it found nationwide was that where these were installed, that there were more rear-end collisions. And it slowed down the number of T-bone, you know, sidecar, which are the more devastating and cost more property damage, but then there was that increase in rear end, which usually were from people aware that the red light cameras were operating, and so they did not want to even approach going through a red, or a yellow light, so they would put their, it sounded like they'd put their brakes on and then a car behind would run into them. So, does GATSO, I mean, what would their, would they raise, or, there's a timing element with how long the yellow light is on. Is that gonna increase allowing for that so that maybe there aren't as many rear end collision, collisions? Or is that something that GATSO, if that's the company that's gonna be doing this, is that something that they're gonna have to deal with through you or through the council or what?
Well, I'm aware of that study. First of all, I think the length of the yellow light is, there's an industry standard, and I think, but our engineers ultimately, our local traffic engineers, if I'm not mistaken, are ultimately, make the decision how long it should be. So that would be evaluated as time goes on. I also venture to say, I don't know the length of this study, but I would say if, if the study was conducted over a longer year period in regard to these tools, you would see it even out. But the bottom line is, yes, I agree that initially or for a certain time period, there could be an increase in rear end collisions, but rear end collisions tend not to be as dangerous or fatal inducing as a T-bone collision. I started my career as a deputy in Colorado, and in the jurisdiction where I worked, we'd have about 50 to 70 traffic fatalities per year. And what I discovered is how easily it was to die in a T-bone crash at intersections. I'm looking for tools, like I said, we've had success. I think our crash rate is down 15% in seven years. I want to push it down further. And what I'm noticing out there is aggressive driving in the form of speeding, tailgating, and first of all, if you rear end somebody in a crash, the person who rear ended that vehicle is generally considered to be at fault because you're supposed to be traveling at a safe distance. Obviously, they're not if they rear, if they rear ended somebody.
The other, this, this study concluded, had in there that they saw that the benefits to red light cameras outweighed that increase in, in rear end, that they went through the different benefits that they saw there. But I was wondering, is there going to be, I mean, if you have 13 intersections, is there a cost that's applied to each of those intersections based on the number of violations that you believe or problems that you see there and all? And also, would those same intersections or that same company be using? Because it, it sounded like you can combine the red light and the speed camera together. I mean, is that something that you're contemplating too or?
Yes, and what's interesting, what I've found interesting is there's an industry standards for the threshold in, say, for example, people who are turning right on red. Those stoplight cameras also monitor the speed, and I believe GATSO's threshold for issuing a citation where somebody doesn't stop on red is, if they're going faster than 16 miles per hour. And that's interesting, because that's reality. Because generally, if you're going, in, in reality, if you're going 10 miles per hour when you violate that right turn on red, you didn't stop, you're going 10 miles per hour. At 10 miles, at 10 miles per hour, that's slow enough to respond to anything that may happen in front of you. That's reality. It's interesting that even 30 years ago, I remember I had an FTO that told me how to watch for a stop sign violation, and he said, watch their hubcaps. If they're still moving, you can tell they're still moving, and you can cite them for that. And I thought, well, gee, that's, yeah, I'm a cop, but that's kind of ridiculous. That's, that's, that's not a righteous ticket. I'm gonna write a stop sign violation for somebody who out and out blows it or they cause an accident. So it's interesting that the industry has taken this standard, this realistic and practical standard. Some people would argue, well, the law is the law. Well, I, I like this, they're trying to be fair. They're trying to be righteous in how they enforce this. And like I say, I only want to use these, we've identified 13 intersections that are a problem. And the cost, the cost I look at partially is the cost in traffic crashes that are occurring at these intersections. The cost in sending cops, the cost in sending firefighters, the cost to insurance companies. It's not very hard to get several thousand dollars' worth of damage to a vehicle in this day and age. So where these programs have been implemented successfully, all those costs are driven down. And as I've been hearing it lately, because of all the fireworks calls we've been responding to, we do have better things to enforce on our city or to investigate in our city. If we can drive traffic crashes down, our officers can be investigating more serious matters and trying to hold people accountable in serious crimes.
Well, and what I had read in these different studies that I looked at over the weekend was that different intersections are, are assigned different costs. And like Elk Grove, this is a study out in California, Elk Grove versus Napa, one intersection was $2,000 and the other one was $3,500, is they were charged by the company that was doing them out there. And then they also raised the issue of, of aging equipment and how costs seem to go up even though the equipment ages and becomes less reliable. And the other thing was the, the calibration and spiking that sometimes occurs, and that I don't know if you can address that, or if that's something that if GATSO was here, they would address?
They could address that, I'm sure.
Okay.
That's the one thing that impressed me with this company. Every question I had or my staff had, they had an immediate and ready plausible answer.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chief, is the GATSO, is that the company we had come and give a presentation a few years ago? I think we had a couple of them.
Redflex, I believe, did, yeah. At least two of them, and GATSO would have been one of the two.
Okay. Who sets the fine rate? Did you say that? Who sets the?
The city council.
Okay.
The city council.
Because I thought I heard a conversation about we were gonna be a little lower than other places, and I'm not sure, you know, to what degree we have that flexibility because GATSO's also got to get their piece of the pie.
You do almost completely. And the, given the social economics of Waterloo, my recommendation would be for a red light violation, $60 or $70. It's an educational effort, it's a safety effort. And they would, when I ask GATSO their cost, they retain, I believe, 30 to 40% of that. Again, they are a company that's in the business of generating a profit, and they're running, they have a lucrative business throughout the world.
And then the only other comment I guess I have is, you know, going back to your mobile handheld versus stationary. I know the folks on Downing Street would love to have a stationary speed camera there. I mean, that's been a, that's been an issue for the 10 years I've been on city council, and it comes and it goes, but with two schools there and that housing, income housing development there, that they've got kids all over the place, and I just think to pay a police officer, forget the fact that we're, you know, we can always use officers doing better things, but to pay somebody to sit there and hold a radar gun, I think it's just, in this day and age with the technology we've got, I think that's just a real poor decision. And I think we ought to put something in stationary there, and there's some other areas around schools or some other places where pedestrians are pretty prevalent that are known speed areas, that I would say those should be the ones we put up stationary. I assume, I assume that we could move them after some period of time, even if they are stationary.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, these are, they're not as mobile, of course, as a trailer.
Sure.
But they're movable.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Quick question and a comment if I can. The question is, who does the billing? Do they direct bill the person that ran the red light?
Yes, they do all of it.
So do we get some kind of a review from them, or do you get some kind of a review on how many they're doing at a certain intersection and?
Yes.
So we get, we'll get data off of this?
Yes, what's nice is this is a web-based program, and practically any report I or my staff or finance department would need, we simply pull it up and generate a report based on the parameters we're looking for.
So there's no potential where somebody could say, well, that's my friend and we're not gonna charge them? It's gonna be a direct bill from the company?
Correct.
Okay. Second comment would be, a couple weeks ago, I was on a plane going to DC and just having to be sitting next to a county deputy from Dubuque, and like Mr. Schmidt has talked in the past about Dubuque has done a lot with cameras. He's totally convinced that red light cameras, cameras in intersections have definitely reduced crime and activities that are, communities don't want to have. So he's, he was very supportive of that, but I just want to make sure that we're being honest with our citizens and that it's a direct bill. And no additional cost on the billing side of things.
Well, and that's another, and I like to look at things as pieces of a puzzle. A program like this becomes a small piece of the puzzle that is security cameras for the community. Again, it's a web-based system. Anybody we, as a police department, identify as to who can tie into these cameras to see a live feed, we're allowed to do that, say dispatch, an investigator, and they record to a certain point as well. So we're able to pull up an incident that occurred in the past, within the past hour or two. Another interesting feature is they have license plate recognition. Let's say we have a bank robbery, we have a child abducted, we can simply enter the plate or a portion of it, and if that car were to travel through an intersection or through an area where one of these cameras is located, we'd have designated persons within our organization, such as myself, that would get a text on my cellphone that this car just traveled through this intersection going this particular direction.
Does Dubuque use GATSO?
I don't think they're engaging in automatic traffic enforcement yet.
One final thing.
Sure.
Chief DeAndrelka, would the, if speed cameras are used, would they be moving around to different places in Waterloo?
Yes, initially, the policy I would like to have with the city, the council's blessing is the trailer would be utilized wherever we get citizen complaints, but the handheld units would be used in any, any area at the officer's discretion.
Is there any way, I mean, are you thinking about doing a combination of stationary versus handheld versus trailer? Or, I mean, using all of those different technologies?
If the city council directs, if they give me the direction to go with stationary, we certainly will use it where we see in areas of high violation. The one thing I'm big on is always is justification. These technology like this, tools like this should only be used in areas where there's justification for utilizing those tools. And we need to have a reasonable threshold. We, we shouldn't be having these issued tickets for going one or two miles per hour over the limit. That's not reasonable, that's not righteous, even though it is the law. So I think the city needs to establish reasonable thresholds in the enforcement of these laws if we decide to proceed with this program.
Well, I guess I'd bring that up about stationary because it seems like West Third Street is becoming Needham Raceway, and I'd like to see that get stopped a little bit.
And West Fifth, we're seeing many areas where we're seeing increase in speeding violations.
Chief, I, I read through the information, and I tried to find where a person is in denial that they were driving the car at the time that the picture was taken of their car going through the intersection or whatever. Does the fine go with the car? Or let's say a guy said, well, I wasn't driving it, must have been my son. My son should get the ticket, not me.
There's owner liability in the ordinance, and let's say your son is driving the car. If you're willing to give your son up, the company will cite your son. But if you're unwilling to identify who is driving the car, the owner has liability for that violation.
Okay. Gotcha. Any other questions, Chief?
So I can turn on my wife.
There's a quote, there's a quote of the week.
Yeah, buddy.
You know, the sense I'm getting from the council members is you've given me the blessing to proceed.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
I concur.
So there's your no vote.
Thank you.
The unvote. All right. Can we roll this one?
No.
All right. Well, we got a couple more minutes before the next group comes in.
It says approximate though, so we can start.
They're not ready right now.
Oh, they're not?
Oh.
They're, um, probably not ready.
Okay.
Does anyone want a coffee?
At the Isle of Capri because I can get room service. Okay, I should be staying at the Ramada. Okay, but I should be staying there as a Hotel RL. Okay, and I can assure you that when I come back in thirty days, I'll be staying downtown. Okay, because in thirty days, whether we've painted or we haven't painted, there will be room service, there will be service, there will be quality, there will be staff that actually care whether the hotel rooms are clean. So, that's our vision. Um, I can sit up here all day and tell you as much as you want to know, but I figure it's best to actually answer questions. So, I'm here to answer your questions and, and see what you'd like to know.
And, and just really quickly, you know, thank you everyone, thank you, uh, other members, your staff for being here as well. I think one of the first things that really, um, from our conversations that really struck me was the conversation about quality. And having high standards in, um, the customer service, the meals you provide, the type of support you have when people hold events. And so that was something that really struck with me as well. Can you talk just a little bit before council asks questions, just a little bit about your background though? Uh, you mentioned the portfolio size, but just a little bit because you have a really intriguing background yourself.
You bet. Um, I have actually been in the hospitality industry for slightly longer than thirty years. I won't say exactly how long because that would age me. Um, you know, but a little more than thirty years. Um, the first fifteen years of my career, I spent working for Hilton Hotel Corporation. Um, I advanced through Hilton Hotels and I actually was Vice President Development for the family-owned operation of Hilton Hotels. I, um, office out of and ran the Palmer House in Chicago for four years, Chicago Hilton and Towers. Um, I had fifty-two hotels in my portfolio with Hilton. And in nineteen ninety-six, I started my firm on my own and started doing, um, consulting and hospitality work in the industry. I've been on my own since nineteen ninety-six. My firm's grown slightly larger since nineteen ninety-six. I have a few more staff members and team members on our team. Um, and our, our niche is exactly what we're doing here today. Our niche is finding distressed assets that we know that are in the right market, that have location, location, location as the key factors, but that are actually being underserved and are not being operated properly. Um, so that's why we're here is we know that this meets our market demand and we're very successful in terms of what we do with those types of operations. Um, you know, that's kind of the short answer to that question if that makes sense.
And the conversation about, uh, the ability to bring people together. Um, you know, you have, you know, the Marriott going a little ways down the street, but can you, um, talk about the parking aspect?
Sure, one, one of the things is, is I told someone earlier today is that, you know, you have a fairly large convention center. So, the critical aspect for us is the fact that we can't successfully operate the convention center unless we as a community are able to get all the other hotel owners together. So, I don't sit here and worry that there's going to be a new Marriott opening over by John Deere. Okay, I think I heard from the news media today that there's also going to now be another Marriott that's going into, um, is it Cedar Falls or the neighboring community, one of those communities that they announced today they're building a new hotel. Um, those things don't concern me. I actually see that as, as a huge advantage and a large selling feature. Okay, because in order to put two thousand people in the convention center, I need two thousand hotel rooms. Okay, so one of the first things I'm going to do is get with all the other hotel owners in town and say, okay, in order for us to make this work, we need your support. I need the Holiday Inns and the Marriots and the Hiltons and everybody else that's out there to help us sell this facility and actually help us be able to service those customers. So, those things are actually beneficial for us. They're beneficial for the community because it brings more people into the community. You know, one of the advantages that we have is, you know, a, a lot of people will look at this and say, okay, well, why don't we get someone local? Why don't we get a smaller operator? Why don't we get this? Why don't we get that? There's always, you know, a question of why don't we do something different? Okay, well, one of the other advantages that I have is I also have seven other hotels that get convention leads throughout the United States. Every convention that comes into the city of Omaha, I get the convention lead for. Every convention that comes into the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, I get the convention leads for. Okay, so, does that mean I'm going to take those and move them here? No, my hotel there will bid on them. But what it does do for us is it gives us and your Convention Visitors Bureau leads and contacts of people who are going to different cities every single year for conventions throughout the United States. Okay, and one thing that people in the convention industry will tell you is that they don't want to go to the same place twice. Okay, they want to go someplace different. One year they're going here, one year they're going there. There are people who are single-use and they actually want to be in the same place twice because it meets that need. But it gives us the ability to reach out and bring in people that have never been to Waterloo, Iowa. Okay, so there is a huge advantage to that from a standpoint of using the network of the other hotels that we actually have throughout the U.S.
All right, does anyone have any questions right now?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
First of all, welcome to Waterloo.
Thank you.
And, uh, will there be any downtime when you're going through the renovation?
We don't like downtime. Downtown, downtime takes money out of my pocket. Um, to answer your question, one of the first things that we're doing here is I've got a team of three people here with me this week. Um, and between Aaron and Colton and Don, their entire function this week is to get their hands around every single thing that the hotel's doing and everything that the convention center is doing. Because one of the assurances that I've made your customers, okay, is that I won't displace them. Okay, they want assurances and they're calling me daily. Um, we got a phone call on the way over here today from, is it Mike Wies? Um, from a, a gentleman in Des Moines, Mike Wies, who is with one of the Conservation Associations. And their biggest concern was, well, we have this event booked and what's going to happen with our event? And our assurance to them is that your event's taking place. Okay, the benefit of a hotel is that we can stage the work that we're doing around the events that are already taking place. So, the answer is short is no. Will there be facilities or services within the facilities that may not be available at every given moment? Yes, that will take place, but we will completely work with the existing customer base first to ensure that their service and their quality of service is one hundred percent exceeding their expectations so that it doesn't impact them.
Have you got a timeline on how long this is going to take to renovate the?
The timeline that I agreed to is eighteen months. The timeline I have for Mr. McDowell sitting back here, who's my head of construction, is nine months start to finish. He's going to be living here with you, so, that's my timeframe.
So, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
So, you bring in your own builders and contractors? It's not a lot of local?
I disagree. We do and we don't. Um, you know, our first thought when we're doing something like this is let's keep the money in the community. Okay, so we're going to come in and we're going to actually seek bids from local contractors just like anyone else would. And we would like to actually use people in the local community because they're familiar with it and it helps bring money into the community. So, they will have every bit of opportunity to work with us. At the end of the day, it comes down to quality, level of finish, level of service, and the ability to complete the job. So, yes, our first focus would be local, but we do have the ability to turnkey from outside if we needed to, but that's not our immediate focus.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morris.
Yeah, Mr. Leslie, um, I see by the photo that it's called the Waterloo Convention Center. It's still going to be the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center, isn't it?
Our plan is to actually change the name. Um, we feel, and, and let me, let me clarify this for you. Um, we have independently reached out as well to the family relative to that. Okay, and they are comfortable with the fact that we're open to changing the name. And we feel Waterloo Convention Center is critical to bringing people into the Waterloo community and understanding what that is. Having said that, our initial plan right now is to create a memorial on the site in front with, you know, I'm having some people work on that right now of how we do that. And, and we make sure that we completely memorialize what we're doing with the Sullivan Brothers and that type of thing with the family's support and their blessing of what we're doing with that. But yes, the, the plan is to literally change the name to the Waterloo Convention Center.
And then Aaron has also reached out to the family as well. And I don't think when, was the Five Sullivan Brothers Museum was not built, um, when this originally had the name changed so as well. So, uh, Aaron has reached out to the family to talk about that. Did you want to comment or you're fine?
Sure.
I had a conversation with Kelly Sullivan last summer and just said, question's been asked, what do you think? She said, well, you know, it's, it's been nice. We'd like to maintain some sort of presence there for the family, but we understand that money follows a name change sometimes. So, provided that there's a presence there, she was very concerned about the artwork that's inside and making sure that that stays with the Grouse Museum District or the Waterloo Center for the Arts. But she understood and said, you know, I, I think we could be supportive. I think it would be helpful to have her help us as that, that name is changed. Because if you've got an advocate that understands it, who holds the same name, that's not a bad thing at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
The six million dollars you're going to put in the convention center is far less than the original proposal that I saw that you guys made. And it's far less than, um, quotes that we got would cost to fix that place up to make it a state-of-art facility. Are, are you able to make it this nice for six million dollars? Or is it six million dollars the first round of improvements to make it a premier convention center?
Before we get to that, um, and to add to your point, um, Councilman Lynn, we received several different, um, from our former, um, um, building official was one number. From the study that was done, there was another number. So, we've seen several different numbers over the course of the last year or so. So, the, the number that we're at today, um, Mr. Leslie, you can talk about what that includes.
Absolutely. Um, I feel that the six million dollars is, is adequate to give us the representation we need to be competitive with any convention center in the state of Iowa. Okay, um, that's, the way we have it earmarked currently is a million dollars on the exterior, a million dollars on technology, and four million on the interior. Okay, um, when you look at the interior from the standpoint of space, you've got to keep in mind that we're not moving walls. Okay, the, the layout of the space, the functionality of the space, those things work really well. What we're replacing is carpets, flooring, wall covering, ceiling tiles, lighting, and those things of that aspect. Can I tell you with certainty that four million dollars is going to do a hundred percent? I, I can't tell you that with certainty. Um, I can tell you that we've done, um, you know, in, in the last two years, we've done probably close to forty million dollars worth of renovations on hotels in convention space similar to this. Um, and I feel like we'll get ninety percent there with what we're earmarked and what we're budgeting. But at the end of the day, our commitment is to make this a success and, and the only way we make money is to make this work. So, if there's a million dollars difference or a two million dollars difference, then we're going to spend the additional million or two million we need to make it be a first-class facility. I can tell you that when we are finished, we will meet the IAC certification requirements of a convention center which you don't have.
Have you ever stated a Drury Inn?
Have I?
Yes.
Yes, sir, many times.
Is that kind of the level that this is going to be?
Um, I would equate a Drury Inn to being very similar to a Ramada and we're more the Marriott Hilton, um, upper-scale brand.
Okay.
Um, our properties are typically four-star or higher.
Okay.
So, I like Drury. It's a great company. Um, they do a great job. They serve the limited-service economy market very, very well, um, and provide a great product, but we're looking to reach beyond that. We will compete head-to-head with, um, any Hilton there is and the, will be nicer than the Marriott that they're building near John Deere.
It will?
Yes, without a doubt.
Yeah, it, how, how it'll measure against the Casino Hotel? Is that a four-star or is that a?
I'm staying at the Casino Hotel and I'd give it a strong three. Um, you know, my joke and, and I'm, I don't drink an awful lot, but I do like a glass of wine on occasion. And, you know, at my hotel, you can get wine out of a bottle instead of a box. Um, you know, love the casino, they serve a great function, they do a great job. Um, but I would consider that three-star on a scale of where we're at, and we're closer to four-plus.
Mr. Mayor, um, not necessarily a question for you, Mr. Leslie, but didn't we just commit a half million dollars to the convention center this past year? Is that this past year or was that the year before? And I'm just wondering where we're at in that. Is that work already done? Is that work in progress? Is that money that can be saved? What's the status of that? So, not a question for you.
Do we, do we talk about that now or could? Yeah, if you want to.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, you'll note the development agreement does have a grant portion in there. So, what we are looking at is the fact that we have committed some, some existing bond funds and some bond funds in the CIP to be approved. We'd go ahead and utilize those to help them get going right away as the grant funding source.
So, we'll be using some of that money?
Mr. Mayor, well, with the one fifty that Convention Visitors Bureau was sending to Conway, does that disappear now?
Hotel motel?
Not, 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 not convention, the motel hotel tax, a hundred and fifty goes directly to the convention center. Do will that disappear? We won't continue to give them the hundred and fifty.
No, we won't.
Okay.
I'll take it if you'd like to.
Shouldn't have mentioned it.
And then the other thing I, I would just mention, um, you know, I'm not real familiar with any of the military history in Omaha or Fort Lauderdale or wherever else you're at, but I'd, I'd really, really strongly suggest you rethink the renaming. I'm all about Waterloo, but that is a unique part of American history. And I think if you don't understand that, you're probably missing a great marketing opportunity. My opinion.
Respectfully, I tell you that I, from a military standpoint, um, I come from a family that has served in probably every war going back to prior to World War Two, um, and probably every level of service and, and, and every branch of the armed service. Um, so I have a huge respect for the military and I completely understand that. Having said that, I believe that we can do a very strong memorial setting for that to honor them and their service and what they've done for the community and their country and not impact the name of the facility itself and have the family and the community be proud with what we do with that, if that makes sense.
Do you have any questions? So, this is setting the date of hearing. So, we wanted you all to have a presentation about, uh, where we're headed at, uh, the opportunity that we have right now. Um, you know, thank you for reaching out to those that have hosted functions there as well because, as you know, over the past year or so, had to do a lot of phone conversation. Aaron has had to do a lot of calling to folks to assure them that we are taking some aggressive steps to making sure that the facility is where it needs to be. So, great opportunity. Before we get down, um, I don't know if Mr. Duss would have any comments. You've had conversations with the business sector and folks as well. You have any, any thoughts?
Sure, I was busy tweeting.
Meeting.
Yes, I, Steve Duss, Greater Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber, thanks for the opportunity. When the city began looking at alternatives for what, what should be done to improve the convention center and its ability to attract business back to Waterloo again in the Cedar Valley, uh, we assembled a committee of businesspeople from around Waterloo who would have interest and also, uh, professional capability to, to, to contribute to that discussion. Uh, as it, as the project moved along, uh, Mr. Leslie's firm was discovered, uh, and the city engaged them in conversation and it moved along fairly quickly and we liked what we saw from the beginning, uh, in terms of the way that they were approaching their, the project, their background, the sensitivity to the local market, uh, and the area market, their ability to recruit conventions and meetings and their, their, um, ability to gauge what our true market abilities are here, uh, and to collaborate throughout the Cedar Valley with others who are in the hospitality business. Uh, we, from what I have seen personally of the development plan and, and agreement, I think that you'll, the more details you see, the more you'll like it. So, we believe that this is, is good for, um, the tourism business in the Cedar Valley.
Aaron, you have anything too?
Over the last.
Mr. Buzzard.
Aaron's fine, Mayor. Um, over the last six, seven years, we've been having conversations about the convention center and the hotel needing improvements. And there have been numerous conversations with numerous entities, um, some serious, some not. Of all of them that we've had, this organization is the most equipped to take on this facility, to do what we need to have done at the hotel and to operate a forty thousand square-foot convention center. Everything that we hear, not everything that we hear, nine times out of ten, what we hear from customers who have a subpar experience or even an okay experience is service. And Mr. Leslie spoke to that. They're going to ramp up the service. I've had the opportunity to see a couple of their properties and what he's saying is what they do. Uh, so, everything that they're going to do, I think, within the convention center and within the hotel puts us light-years ahead of where we are right now and customers are going to notice that right away. So, um, this is a very exciting opportunity for our team and, you know, when people are saying, call us when the Ramada changes to something else, or call us when there are improvements, our convention sales team is going to be very busy the next few months. So, uh, that's an exciting thing for, for Waterloo and for all of us. So, thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question. Um, from a standpoint of some, something that Councilman Lynn asks a lot about is his jobs. The existing jobs within the Ramadian and the convention center, are those people going to be out of jobs and will there be more jobs that will be added to that? I guess that's basically what I'm kind of interested in finding out.
I'll let Mr. Leslie speak, but there is a, a part of the development agreement talks about a certain amount of minimum jobs that need to be held that is held as well and that far exceeds the current staffing level. There, I don't even, would, would you consider it bare-level staffing levels that they currently have right now are less than bare-level?
Councilman, I have to tell you, I was a little taken aback in the last two weeks. Um, originally, just to give you another piece of the puzzle that I'm not even sure everyone's even aware of at this point is that, um, we had originally, when we negotiated the agreement, our plan was we wouldn't take possession of the hotel or we wouldn't close on the hotel till everything was finalized. Um, in the last two weeks, kind of that game plan changed and we reached an agreement with the owner, existing owner of the hotel. Um, and we're actually consummating, finalizing our transaction with them either July fifteenth or July seventeenth. So, we'll take possession of the Ramada and begin operating the Ramada as well as the convention center under that agreement that they have at that time. Um, when I say that I was a little taken aback is that, you know, I have a, a two-hundred-room hotel in, in Omaha that, um, we have a hundred and ten employees, probably give or take a few, and we only have about six thousand square feet of meeting space. Um, here at the Ramada, as of yesterday and then again today, when we met with the manager to talk about some of the transition items that we have, they have nineteen employees to service a two-hundred-room hotel and a forty-five thousand square-foot convention center. Okay, that would explain why there's trash all over the ground. That would explain why it's not clean. Um, but to answer your question, um, in terms of the employees that are there, our focus is always, let's retain the employees. Okay, there's a reason they're there. If they're unhappy, it's not because of the hotel. They're unhappy with management, they're unhappy with the situation. So, everybody starts from day one new, um, but anybody who's there today has given a job and they have ninety days to prove themselves just as if they were a new person with our company and they get the same benefits, they get everything else. Um, we're a pretty benefit, what I intend, I typically call benefit-rich company from a standpoint of, you know, we offer more benefits than most hotels. If you walk into probably any of the hotels in your market, none of them offer the compensation plans that we offer and we typically price ourselves ahead of everybody else in the market. For example, if they're going to make twelve dollars an hour down the street cleaning rooms, we're going to pay them fifteen dollars an hour because I want only the best housekeepers in the market. I only want the best food servers. I only want the best restaurant servers. So, what that does is we become the premier place to actually go to work. To answer the question from a standpoint of jobs and creation of jobs, we agreed with the city that we'd have at least a hundred employees on staff through this development process, um, in terms of what we're doing within terms of incentives. Um, if, if we hit fifty percent of our goal in the first two years in terms of marketing and advertising and the things that we're doing, okay, a hundred employees will be what I need to service the convention center. Okay, so, i- if you think about it from a standpoint of, you know, if I have, if the convention center is being used thirty percent of the time and you have a capability of two thousand-plus people, okay, and I'm serving meals two times a week or once a week and, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year and we're functioning and operating, um, it'll take a hundred employees to operate the convention center when it's fully up and running. Our convention center in Omaha, we have, um, a little over sixty thousand square feet of space. Um, we have, I want to say ninety-two full-time employees that work in our convention center there and we typically spend somewhere between twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars a month on contract services to meet our demand. Um, so we'll, we'll exceed that number.
Mr. Mayor, could we have Noel talk a little bit more about the, what we're going to do about the bond funds and that type of thing, just for the audience, uh, upgrade this, update this a little bit?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, we have two different development agreements. The one is for the hotel, which is essentially, um, tax rebates and, um, the benefit of the added revenue of the hotel motel stream, um, going to, into the hotel, uh, for that particular hotel. For the convention center, um, it's essentially, and again, it's, right now, that's not paying taxes as a city-owned property, so it'll be put on the tax rolls, it'll have a minimum value, there's a tax rebate, um, incentive package there as well. Um, and then the cash grant that we talked about a little bit before, that again, these were bonds that were dedicated for, um, the convention center improvements that we'll still be continuing to put those forth for that. What it will do is help to alleviate the city needing to bond for future years in the CIP, um, for the convention center, so those bonds in future years will be reallocated in the plan.
And what are those bond totals that you're talking about?
In the CIP copies that you would have, um, I believe we had seven hundred thousand dollars in there for the next five years.
Three point five million dollars.
Three point five million.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment.
Second. Motion made. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
Madam Secretary, if you'd read the roll, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Whopper.
Here.
Most approved, agenda is proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We have an agenda. Twenty gentlemen would like to take that piece of business.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by Jeanette Cockrell to purchase a city-owned lot generally located adjacent to four twenty-eight Cherry Street for one thousand forty dollars with no development agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second on that item of business. Any questions, comments?
It's, it's meeting the property guidelines, so I don't have any problem with it.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, Mr. Western, did you have anything you wanted to offer?
No.
Okay, all right, um, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion is approved.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion for adjournment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call to order the boards and commission committee meeting. Kelly, if you would, please.
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd make move the approval of the agenda as proposed.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. If you would, please, Mr. Powers, take the, um, all of them actually.
Okay, motion to receive and file. Mayor Hart's recommendation of the following appointments. Janet Deal, Boards and Commissions for Met Transit, expiration date is six thirty twenty twenty, and this is a reappointment. Pat Becker, Boards and Commission for Met Transit, expiration date six thirty twenty twenty, reappointment. Penny Drew, Boards and Commission Met Transit, expiration date six thirty twenty twenty, and that's a re- reappointment. Barb Prather, Boards and Commissions Met Transit, expiration date six thirty twenty twenty, that's a reemployment. Jack Good, Boards and Commission Met Transit, expiration date six thirty twenty twenty, that's a reappointment. Sherman Wise, Boards and Commissions, Waterloo Convention Visitors Bureau, expiration date six thirty twenty twenty, that's a reappointment. Jane Gordon, Boards and Commissions, Waterloo Center for Convention, Convention and Visitors Bureau, expiration date six thirty twenty twenty, and that's a reemployment. Oh, and approve the amendments of June 19, 2017, as proposed.
Okay, and I'll second that. Steve, go ahead.
Chairman, committee members. Steve Holmberger, Waste Management Services Director. I discovered, I need to correct a statement I made during last week's finance discussion. I indicated that the old 1999 Gators that were being traded in to obtain the newer used Gators did not have cabs, and in fact, they do. During the departmental discussions, it was important that we replace the unit with one with a cab, and the used unit that was requested does in fact have a cab. So I don't know if there's any other questions, but that's been...
Did you have any questions, or anybody in council had a question?
Stakes are legitimate.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Okay. New business?
Mr. Travel Request. I take the travel request. Ed Abbott, Building Maintenance, to attend a class, Public Health, Iowa Department of Public Health, and it's an online renewal, and that date will be 6/15. Amount not to exceed 240. Joel Shepard, Business Building Maintenance, Iowa Department of Public Health. This is also an online course, 6/15, $240. Todd Henrick, Building Maintenance, Class Iowa Department of Public Health. Destination is an online renewal, 6/15. Cost not to exceed $336. Keith Caspary, Director of Aviation, attend Cedar Valley Coalition. Destination, Washington DC, 6/12 through 6/15 of 2017. Amount not to exceed $1,467.50, and that is an amended number. Investigator Saunders, attend a class O-I-O-M-G-A, which is the International Outlaw Motorcycle Gang Investigators Association Conference, 2017, in Scottsdale, Arizona. Dates 8/19 through 8/25. Amount not to exceed $1,258. Herb Morley, Investigator Morley, Class International Association Identification Conference. Destination, Atlanta. Date 8/6 through 12/2017. Amount not to exceed $1,628.
And I'll second all the pre, or the travel requests. Any questions on any of those?
I do have one, just a real quick question. The difference in the price of 240, and then one is 336.
Those are actual certifications. They're like their plumbing certification, electroplating, and their lead paint certifications.
Can we get a name, sir?
Mark Rosen.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Look, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass. Pre-oths.
This is preauthorization to expend over $1,000. Building Maintenance, amount estimated $15,671.12, and this expenditure is for emergency lighting at the Waterloo Library. Clerk Finance, amount estimated $14,687, and that expenditure, Iowa League of Cities' Membership dues, 7/117 to 6/3018, to be paid in fiscal year 2018. Fire Department, estimated $8,500. That expenditure is uniforms for personnel fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $7,750. That expenditure is for floor recoding of the gym and fitness studio at the Sparksplex fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $3,400. That expenditure is software subscription and technical support for our membership registration, facility rental, software. These are services, amount estimated $1,088. Expenditures, glass gaskets for Young Arena, tempered safety glass around the ice surface. That is fiscal year 2017 as well.
2018.
18.
Yeah.
Thanks. 2018.
Yeah. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bill's paid.
Motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. [inaudible]
Mr. Mayor. Could I take the travel request? Ed Abbott, Building Maintenance, to attend a class, Public Health, Iowa Department of Public Health, and it's an online renewal, and that date will be 6/15. Amount not to exceed 240. Joel Shepard, Business Building Maintenance, Iowa Department of Public Health. This is also an online course, 6/15, $240. Todd Henrick, Building Maintenance, Class Iowa Department of Public Health. Destination is an online renewal, 6/15. Cost not to exceed $336. Keith Caspary, Director of Aviation, attend Cedar Valley Coalition. Destination, Washington DC, 6/12 through 6/15 of 2017. Amount not to exceed $1,467.50, and that is an amended number. Investigator Saunders, attend a class O-I-O-M-G-A, which is the International Outlaw Motorcycle Gang Investigators Association Conference, 2017, in Scottsdale, Arizona. Dates 8/19 through 8/25. Amount not to exceed $1,258. Herb Morley, Investigator Morley, Class International Association Identification Conference. Destination, Atlanta. Date 8/6 through 12/2017. Amount not to exceed $1,628.
And I'll second all the pre, or the travel requests. Any questions on any of those?
I do have one, just a real quick question. The difference in the price of 240, and then one is 336.
Those are actual certifications. They're like their plumbing certification, electroplating, and their lead paint certifications.
Okay.
Can we get a name, sir?
Mark Rosen.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Look, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass. Pre-oths.
This is preauthorization to expend over $1,000. Building Maintenance, amount estimated $15,671.12, and this expenditure is for emergency lighting at the Waterloo Library. Clerk Finance, amount estimated $14,687, and that expenditure, Iowa League of Cities' Membership dues, 7/117 to 6/3018, to be paid in fiscal year 2018. Fire Department, estimated $8,500. That expenditure is uniforms for personnel fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $7,750. That expenditure is for floor recoding of the gym and fitness studio at the Sparkslex fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $3,400. That expenditure is software subscription and technical support for our membership registration, facility rental, software. These are services, amount estimated $1,088. Expenditures, glass gaskets for Young Arena, tempered safety glass around the ice surface. That is fiscal year 2017 as well.
2018.
18.
Yeah.
2018.
Yeah. Any questions on any of those? I'll second that. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions passes, and this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the bill's payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's 4,575,601.88. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bill's paid.
Motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. [inaudible]
Mr. Mayor. Could I take the travel request? Ed Abbott, Building Maintenance, to attend a class, Public Health, Iowa Department of Public Health, and it's an online renewal, and that date will be 6/15. Amount not to exceed 240. Joel Shepard, Business Building Maintenance, Iowa Department of Public Health. This is also an online course, 6/15, $240. Todd Henrick, Building Maintenance, Class Iowa Department of Public Health. Destination is an online renewal, 6/15. Cost not to exceed $336. Keith Caspary, Director of Aviation, attend Cedar Valley Coalition. Destination, Washington DC, 6/12 through 6/15 of 2017. Amount not to exceed $1,467.50, and that is an amended number. Investigator Saunders, attend a class O-I-O-M-G-A, which is the International Outlaw Motorcycle Gang Investigators Association Conference, 2017, in Scottsdale, Arizona. Dates 8/19 through 8/25. Amount not to exceed $1,258. Herb Morley, Investigator Morley, Class International Association Identification Conference. Destination, Atlanta. Date 8/6 through 12/2017. Amount not to exceed $1,628.
And I'll second all the pre, or the travel requests. Any questions on any of those?
I do have one, just a real quick question. The difference in the price of 240, and then one is 336.
Those are actual certifications. They're like their plumbing certification, electroplating, and their lead paint certifications.
Okay.
Can we get a name, sir?
Mark Rosen.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Look, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass. Pre-oths.
This is preauthorization to expend over $1,000. Building Maintenance, amount estimated $15,671.12, and this expenditure is for emergency lighting at the Waterloo Library. Clerk Finance, amount estimated $14,687, and that expenditure, Iowa League of Cities' Membership dues, 7/117 to 6/3018, to be paid in fiscal year 2018. Fire Department, estimated $8,500. That expenditure is uniforms for personnel fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $7,750. That expenditure is for floor recoding of the gym and fitness studio at the Sparkslex fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $3,400. That expenditure is software subscription and technical support for our membership registration, facility rental, software. These are services, amount estimated $1,088. Expenditures, glass gaskets for Young Arena, tempered safety glass around the ice surface. That is fiscal year 2017 as well.
2018.
18.
Yeah.
2018.
Yeah. Any questions on any of those? I'll second that. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass, and this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the bill's payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's 4,575,601.88. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bill's paid.
Motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. [inaudible]
Mr. Mayor. Could I take the travel request?
Ed Abbott, Building Maintenance, to attend a class, Public Health, Iowa Department of Public Health, and it's an online renewal, and that date will be 6/15. Amount not to exceed 240. Joel Shepard, Business Building Maintenance, Iowa Department of Public Health. This is also an online course, 6/15, $240. Todd Henrick, Building Maintenance, Class Iowa Department of Public Health. Destination is an online renewal, 6/15. Cost not to exceed $336. Keith Caspary, Director of Aviation, attend Cedar Valley Coalition. Destination, Washington DC, 6/12 through 6/15 of 2017. Amount not to exceed $1,467.50, and that is an amended number. Investigator Saunders, attend a class O-I-O-M-G-A, which is the International Outlaw Motorcycle Gang Investigators Association Conference, 2017, in Scottsdale, Arizona. Dates 8/19 through 8/25. Amount not to exceed $1,258. Herb Morley, Investigator Morley, Class International Association Identification Conference. Destination, Atlanta. Date 8/6 through 12/2017. Amount not to exceed $1,628.
And I'll second all the pre, or the travel requests. Any questions on any of those?
I do have one, just a real quick question. The difference in the price of 240, and then one is 336.
Those are actual certifications. They're like their plumbing certification, electroplating, and their lead paint certifications.
Okay.
Can we get a name, sir?
Mark Rosen.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Look, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass. Pre-oths.
This is preauthorization to expend over $1,000. Building Maintenance, amount estimated $15,671.12, and this expenditure is for emergency lighting at the Waterloo Library. Clerk Finance, amount estimated $14,687, and that expenditure, Iowa League of Cities' Membership dues, 7/117 to 6/3018, to be paid in fiscal year 2018. Fire Department, estimated $8,500. That expenditure is uniforms for personnel fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $7,750. That expenditure is for floor recoding of the gym and fitness studio at the Sparkslex fiscal year 2018. These are services, amount estimated $3,400. That expenditure is software subscription and technical support for our membership registration, facility rental, software. These are services, amount estimated $1,088. Expenditures, glass gaskets for Young Arena, tempered safety glass around the ice surface. That is fiscal year 2017 as well.
2018.
18.
Yeah.
2018.
Yeah. Any questions on any of those?
I'll second that.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass. And this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the bill's payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's 4,575,601.88. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass, and this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the bill's payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's 4,575,601.88. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass, and this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the bill's payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's 4,575,601.88. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass, and this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the bill's payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's 4,575,601.88. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass, and this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the bill's payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's 4,575,601.88. Any questions on the bill's payment?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions pass, and this today, we don't have any budget line amendments, but the
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Come on, Chad. All right, Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Marcy.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jacobs indicated that he would not be with us this evening. I would ask all of you right now to either rise, or you can sit, as we observe a moment of silence. All right, thank you. This evening's pledge will be led by CFO, Michelle Weidner.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Welper.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and under the consent agenda, item number 16, the amendment is needed to add the language "and grading" to the Wagner Road sanitary sewer extension project and amend the amount to read $551,703.69. It is correct electronically as well as hard copy. Also, the minutes of June 19, 2017, regular session as proposed.
Second. A motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda in minutes and corrections. All right, this is oral presentation time. Please come up, let us know what your thoughts are. So, step right up, sir.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I was watching the work session on the five Sullivan brothers, and as a vet, it, I don't know how many of you people are vets, but it's really sad to see the name come off of the Sullivan brothers. It's, I know the family agreed with it, but that's an icon for Waterloo. It's been an icon ever since, I believe, in the 70s, and here are five gentlemen that gave their life up for our country, you know, and I hope that the company that buys it does put some recognition there, because the Conway Plaza does need some help. I mean, it's a little bit rundown, but as far as myself as a vet and other people I've talked to, they have, the Sullivan brothers are known worldwide, not just in Iowa, not just in Waterloo, but I even watched a program from Europe on the five Sullivan brothers. And that's my feeling.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapman. I'm hoping in two weeks, we can have some kind of rendering or some type of what their idea is with regards to what you just said, Mr. Chapman.
Jim Chapman, oh, no, Dave Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I also read a couple of different articles in the paper about the five Sullivan brothers, Convention Center possibly changing hands. I guess I don't understand if there's been enough, in my opinion, research on how much it's costing us to maintain it as citizens when it is an iconic structure for us, and it's always something that says for the betterment of the taxpayer to sell the property, but when we seem to tear down stuff for quite a bit of money and then sell it to somebody for a dollar, we're selling this for a dollar. Also, is it a huge financial burden for the taxpayers? And then we lose control. What goes on, if, I'm not sure, is how that benefits us. Always, I would like to know what our savings will be after we have the sale. I would consider to have, like to have an answer on that. If this is so, I'm, I'm good with it, but not the term of sale. First for a dollar, next providing a $1.05 million grant. Is that going to come from the taxpayers? And a 50% abatement for 10 years, what will be the value immediately after the sale? So, after the sale, the next tax season, does it go on at a dollar value or $5 million? And when will that start? So, I'd like to have an answer on that. The article in the paper stated 3.5 million to $17 million value. Is the hotel already on the tax roll? I'd like to have an answer on that. And it can't fall before, below $5 million for five years. Why are we giving them a tax abatement for 10 when they only have to keep a value for five? Why can't it be the same period of time? And then we're committing 200 spots in the ramp? Are they being used now? If they are, who's getting kicked out? And I'd like to have an answer on that. Downtown parking is at a premium now during any day, and my guess is that not too many people attend an event use the ramp. So, that's the first thing I want to talk about.
That wasn't the first thing.
Well, I have, I have three different things.
Okay.
Next, and these are brief. What agenda item is the planned 2018-22 capital improvements discussion? I didn't see anything on the agenda. Lastly, my question last week about total animal control cost.
All right. The two items you just spoke about with regards to the Convention Center, today we're only setting the date of hearing, and so I let you, I let you, allowed you to continue to ask those questions, even though that's on the agenda, because I want to make sure that next week, I mean, in two weeks, when this comes before us, that we get some of those questions answered for you. And, you know, I can't predict the future, but a lot of the things that you did indicate is exactly what's going to happen. Things I've heard you say over the past 18 months while I've been here are exactly some of the things that are going to take place when this comes forward in about two weeks. So, that will be, that will be addressed in two weeks. Today is just set in the date of hearing. We're going to make Noel work really hard to explain the parts of some of the same questions you asked, because those are addressed and have been addressed.
Okay, I'll be glad to hear that, and the reason I ask the questions now is because it seems like we always do things at the 11th hour, and then our input doesn't get heard or doesn't be, have any impact or time to study.
Yeah, and that's why, part of the reason why having this type of presentation upfront, I was hoping it'll be a little bit better, so it can kind of spark some conversation, because it's a, it's a huge deal. I mean, it's a big deal, a big deal in so many aspects for so many different people, that whether it's the name, whether it is the fact that we have to maintain it, whether it's generating revenue right now, all of those things are big deals, so your questions are absolutely valid, and we will try to get some answers for you when we have the public, public hearing about everything that you asked for.
Thank you.
With regards to animal control, do we?
Sandy had indicated last week that once the--
Oh, the final numbers, the fiscal year is up, then you'll get everything you asked for with regards to animal control. We are up another--
This week?
This week, we're up, so we'll have the final numbers tabulated for this year.
Okay. Our capital improvements, is that on the agenda tonight?
Public hearing.
It was in the paper as if it was, but I didn't see it.
It's--
For another $135 million.
$135 million.
That's what was in the paper.
Number two, public.
That's number, that's number two on public hearings.
I'll be back.
Ah, you just asked your question, you just took-- No. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening?
Forest Diloo, 1725 Huntington Road. The neighbors in my neighborhood lost a great city service this week when they closed the recycling center on Amesboro. This thing is one of the heaviest used in the city of Waterloo, and I've worked with Mark Rice, and Mark Rice has done amazing things to that recycling center. Back in November, when that picture was taken that was in the Courier, it did look like that frequently, almost weekly. Mark went in and changed the bins, made one bin nothing but plastic, another one nothing but cardboard. I believe he made great strides, and I personally visited that center at least once a day, just a drive-through, to see what it looked like, because I care, and it has improved, I believe, tremendously. Granted, there are those people that are throwing out TVs and bar caloungers and bunk beds. Myself, I pick up the metal and take it elsewhere where it can be recycled. I was down there one day, and a lady was out picking up papers, and I got out and helped her pick up the papers. There was another gentleman there, and he picked up metal, and he took it over on Rainbow Drive to a lawnmower shop where they got a veteran's bin for the recycled metals. There are citizens in the area that cared and worked hard at getting it there, and I think we had it a lot better than that November picture. That November picture is probably the worst picture of all of them they had. I, I called the people that did the recycling multiple times. I called them two weeks ago on a Saturday and told them that the plastic bin was full and people were starting to put it on the ground, and I'm sure by Monday, there was a pickup truck load or maybe a dump truck load there, but it was because they don't obviously pull them on Saturday. If, it's such a high volume, you can't keep up with it, you know, but that shows the need. It's a lot cheaper to pick it up there than it is out of the road ditch, like the carpet that was on Black Hawk Road last night that I had to call in, because I'm not man enough anymore to drag it off in the ditch, but I had to call the city and report that that carpet was there. It'd have been easier for the city to pick it up at that site than it would off the street, plus the danger of a motorcycle or a car hitting it, putting it in the ditch. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jim Cameron, 1718 Seneca. I'm not a politician, I'm a simple guy. I represent Iowa Fireworks Company. We open June 13th, we're open through the 8th of July. On June 14th, an individual claiming to be from the city clerk's office came and told us we needed to shut down because we lacked a necessary permit. Necessary permits, which the company, right after the law was passed, contacted the city of Waterloo to ask what permits were needed. They never told us we needed a transient merchant permit. I asked this individual what his name was, he wouldn't tell me. I asked him to produce identification, he said he didn't have it on him. I'm thinking a city official showed up to tell me to shut down my stand, and he doesn't have identification driving his personal vehicle. I said, "Well, that's fine, we'll call the police and we can sort all this out." About a half hour later, an officer showed up and had to call his watch commander to find out what law we were violating. He then told us that we'd be good to run through the end of the day, because the company had worked it out to get the permit the next morning. Twenty minutes later, another officer showed up and shut us down. I will say that we're not trying to make a million dollars off of this. The company donates approximately 10% from our tent located at Cadillac Lanes to fund the Waterloo Veterans Transitional Home. We're just trying to help some guys that serve their country get off the street. That's basically, in a nutshell, what happened. We never really got any explanation. We paid the, I think around $1,500, got the permit by 9:00 AM and opened up again. The fact was, somewhere there was a miscommunication, we were not told we needed it. Turns out, we did, and it cost us a fair amount of business that day, and you have to understand that the individuals that own the company, they helped to get the law passed, and I realize that people have mixed feelings on fireworks, and that's perfectly fine, that you're right as a citizen of this country to feel as you wish and express those opinions. I'm a man that stands up for the Constitution, and there was a great man that once said that we should celebrate the nation's independence in spectacular display, so that's what we're trying to help people do, and as a way of paying back to the communities, the two individuals, Zach and Jeremiah, that own Iowa Fireworks Company, are donating to various nonprofits, including the American Boy Scouts, several churches. There is one city that's receiving funds to build a rec center. We're trying to help some homeless vets get off the street. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. You said, Mr. McCameron?
Cameron.
Cameron, thank you so much. I'll be completely honest with you, this whole change that had taken place from the state level down to the local level has been probably just as interesting for you as it has been for us as well, so if there's any miscommunication on our part, or however it was, glad that you're open, sorry about the miscommunication, but this is a situation that we're trying to deal with, like, in real time, so, I mean, I think our chief could tell you there's some challenges, our clerk's office can tell you there's some challenges in the way that things are done from the state, having their own person inspect, so this has kind of been a work in progress. So, this is the first year we are keeping notes on everything that we're doing, such as situations like yours with businesses, to the community members that have called in from the emails, but we're trying to take all these things into account, so that when this situation happens next year, that we will hopefully be a little bit more efficient in the way that we work with the businesses and that the way that the citizens work, you know, so it's, it's been, it's been a real-time work in progress, so if there's any inconvenience, duly noted, apologize for those. Is there anyone else? All right, I have a, I have a presentation I'd like to make. I would like to ask Dennis Clark to please come up front. All right, how are you, sir? Good, good. You know, this is a very, very special time for us. If there's a such thing as Aquaman-- But you just have no idea how important it is, and the level of work, the level of service, the level of class and distinction that Dennis Clark has brought to the city of Waterloo and surrounding as the general manager of Waterloo Water Works. He's worked hard, there's never a time where he didn't respond to a situation or try to work out the best to help a resident or business that was facing a challenge, and so it gives me great honor and great pleasure to present Dennis, retired as of June 26--
June 30.
June 30, June 30, but on this 26th day of June, this is presented to Dennis Clark in appreciation of your service, dedication, and loyalty in serving the citizens of Waterloo as general manager of the Waterloo Water Works. So, you've done a great job for the city, moved us far ahead, you have a great replacement, you've got some big shoes to fill, but I think he's very capable, too, but Dennis, you've got some words for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your support and guidance and leadership over the years that I've been the general manager, and also I'd like to mention former mayors Clark and Hurley, who were also very supportive of the Water Works. I want to thank council members, current and past council members, for all the support and help you've given us over the years, especially those council members that have served as liaisons to our boards, including Mr. Lind, Mr. Schmidt, and Mr. Welper. Their, their help has been invaluable. I would like to mention our board members, past and present, they're volunteers, and they give themselves freely, and certainly our employees at the Water Works. As I've said many times, I don't fix hydrants after they're clobbered by a car, I don't prepare invoices or take the thousands of water samples we take a year, or go out and fix main brakes in the middle of the night in January when it's below zero. I just kind of put things out there, and the good men and women take care of that for us, so I'm, I'm very grateful for that. And finally, thank you to the residents. The Water Works has made a tremendous investment in infrastructure and resolving some of our other issues over the years, and that's taken some water rate increases, several water rate increases, and the citizens have supported that through the years, and we would not be able to make those rejuvenations and capital improvement plans for the Water Works that we're making without the public supporting those water rate increases, so, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. If we could, if you want--
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Marcy.
Yes, with the council's indulgence, last week we had a work session, and it was about the Hobby Farm, the new language, new changes to the current ordinance that has been found so lacking, and what I, what I did, and to cut this, cut this to the quick, is I just put together a compilation and typed it up about those things that I had suggested could be changes, and so with the council's indulgence, I just want to pass this out to each one of you, if that's okay at this point in time.
All right. Anyone else, any other council members for orals?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file oral comments.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's items one through six, and within that are the bills payment, the bills payment this week, $4,575,601.88. That's four, comma, five, seven, five, comma, six, zero, one, point, eight, eight.
Second. That motion has been made with a second. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On, I have two items on the consent agenda. One, A3, before that public hearing that we're setting, may we please have maybe even another work session and maybe several meetings to really go over in detail that development agreement, and I would like to get the complete development agreement. The development agreement we have here is not complete. For instance, it doesn't show me the things they're supposed to do for the $6 million. That was an attachment that's not on the thing, so I just want to make sure everybody is very clear about what we're doing before that date on the council.
So, you want the items that need to be fixed? And what else?
And maybe further discussion, either, either three at a time or in a work session or just with Noel, whatever.
To do, to--
Before that date comes, and maybe Noel, you can just sit down with a couple of us and go through line by line and explain the development agreement. I just want to make sure we're completely on board with what we're doing.
So, can we do that, just keep the date--
And then items one, A, nine through sixteen, rather than me asking to consider those separately and go through each one and ask some questions, may I have the chief financial officer sit down with me and answer my questions? That might be a lot more efficient than me going through them tonight.
Okay.
With your permission.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
We had an appointment, Rebecca Varno, is it Varno?
It is Rebecca Varno. She is not.
She's not present?
No.
All right, she has, will be on the housing authority board. Was that a new appointment or a? Okay. All right, so hopefully she's watching. Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the adoption of the fiscal year 2018 through 2022 capital improvements program for the city of Waterloo.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open? Yes, sir.
Jim Chalmers, due to our birch, is any of our capital improvement money going into this plan over there with the hotel and the convention center?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We have some current bonds that were approved for use of the convention center. We have some of the newly sold bonds that also were. Those will be utilized in the development agreement as a grant source, as they were going to be used on the convention center as currently approved. So we did offer them up as a grant for the project.
That goes along with the, with the deal, Mayor? That we're, that we're making with the?
It's all in the same agreement.
Same, I think it was a million or something.
It's a one million, fifty thousand, if I recall.
It's the same. It's not additional to that. And then it's basically either that now, or it's three point five million dollars over the next years, or coming up with six million dollars or whatever as a city in the future. So that's what, that's what we would, we would have to do to get the return on investment. And then to add that back to the tax rolls, so we can start earning some revenue for the city as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
David Dryer, thirty-one, forty-five West Forest Street. My guess Noel kind of answered the question of how, my, my question on this was how is it going to get paid for? It states in the paper, one hundred and thirty-five million, so bonds that we have done before and bonds that we just did. So that means to me then that the one hundred and thirty-five million they're talking about is not going to add another bonding issue to the program? But yet, I'm also hearing that from, from the last statement, we have been bonding already to improve the civic center. So therefore, we're going to give this property to a guy for a dollar, and then we're going to improve it. If we're going to improve it, then why are we selling it? That, that's my simple mind thinking this way.
Noel, that's actually a good question. You know, I'm kind of preferring to have this conversation during the, the public hearing about the building, because that's when we'll talk about the contract. That's when we'll have the information about this, the fact that it's X amount of dollars over this amount of time. This is going to, right now, it's not generating any tax revenue.
Agreed.
So this is going to go back, it's going to go to the tax rolls, sort of be earning revenue for, through taxes, back to the city. And so, right now, it's zero. So there's a lot of moving parts, from jobs to, yes, there are incentives, to putting it on the tax rolls, to fixing up, because the biggest problem we've had, or eighteen months, I, I've called everybody. I've called around the country. I've called local developers, and it is, where are we going to get the amount of money without raising your taxes even higher to fix up that convention center? We can only bond X amount of dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars for this public infrastructure. We need more than that, as Mr. Lynn mentioned. We need it more than what we were able to do. So this, this, you know, seems to be a decent opportunity to generate some revenue, some tax revenue, but also to be able to find jobs, to be able to get the needed repairs that we have. Mr. Leslie mentioned earlier that, you know, he's made calls to different, you know, folks that have come in, brought conventions. I made even more. I just got off the phone with a guy that said if we don't do something immediately, they're going to take their thousands of dollars to another community. So this is very important to the city of Waterloo, and it's taken some time. And I'm hoping during the, the, the public hearing, we'll be able to answer all those questions that you may have. And I'm going to work with Councilman Lynn and whomever else to try to structure some of those questions you have as well to be answered for you.
Well, I just hope it's not an eleventh-hour decision again, like we always seem to have happen.
All right.
Todd Omidal, one twenty-four Amity Drive. So if I'm hearing this right, that this one point zero five million dollars is something that the city's going to be paying for over fifteen years in the form of bonds in order to incentivize the purchase of a property. A property that currently is listed as approximately three point five million dollars, that with six million dollars of improvement will get to thirteen point five million dollars in value. If I've got a property that I can put in six million dollars and increase the value ten million dollars, why am I paying someone a million dollars to buy it from me for one dollar? This is a question I have, and I think that's a question that needs to be answered before the work session or before the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution, adopting the fiscal year 2018 through 2022 capital improvement program.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, council discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn?
I move to amend by earmarking fifty thousand dollars for community policing public safety cameras.
Second.
Could you read that one more time? Sorry.
I want to move to amend by earmarking fifty thousand dollars for community policing public safety cameras.
Okay, thank you.
Where are you going to get that from?
That. Someplace in that fund. I've, I've given a couple ideas, but it's probably up to staff to find out if it passes where to get it from. I mean, obviously, we're going to take from somebody, but we, we had a, we had a meeting, the Public Safety Committee had a meeting with the police chief not long ago, and the police chief has identified a serious problem. We have about three locations in town that we could probably immediately deploy public safety cameras and make a big difference in the crime stats in those areas. And, you know, sometimes we just have to not do things the way we used to and do a strategic plan and get cameras deployed. This would go a long way to do it.
So you're not talking about traffic camera?
No, no. I'm talking about surveillance cameras.
Surveillance cameras.
Public safety cameras.
Chief, I, you know, not to put you on the spot, but it's a fifty thousand number I haven't heard of before, right now. So how many cameras, you said? Three?
Three, there are three locations that we have lots of gunfire and crime. And those three locations could easily be the places we would put some cameras. And I, you know, I don't know, maybe it's going to buy fifty cameras, maybe it buys two, I don't know. You guys know. But I, I think we have to commit to start the public safety camera deployment. This is a perfect time to do it. Take it out of the CIP this year, and let's get going on this thing.
Can you tell me what he's talking about?
the director doesn't want to disclose where we're going to monitor criminal activities, if I'm right.
Dan Trowka, police chief, this apparently is the result of the meeting I had with Councilman Schmidt, Amos, and, and Mr. Lynn.
So, yes. Mr. Mayor, I can probably elaborate on this a little bit. Citizen called with some concerns, set up a meeting with Chief Trowka, and during that conversation, the cameras were brought up. And one of the things that Councilman Lynn talked about was, is it's taking funds from a certain area of CIP. It was never identified or anything. But the idea of cameras was an idea that made a lot of sense from a standpoint of helping the chief with some of the issues that are going on in this community, from a standpoint of being able to track some of this. So Councilman Lynn came up with the bad idea, and for me, if there is a way to feasibly do this, and I made that comment during the meeting, if it's feasibly possible, for me, I support it. But that, that was the key issue, is, is this feasible to do?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, that, you just, Mr. Lynn, you stated that meeting was a long time ago?
No, no, last week.
Week ago. So, okay. So in this week, have you asked staff, anybody know where the money might come from? I mean, it's, I'm kind of getting the impression the chief's not even, I mean, other than obviously a need, but where are we going to get this money from? Has there been any courtesy given to staff to give opportunity to look for it? Dollars worth could be moved around, anything like that? Or is it just something that you threw out there at the last eleventh hour?
No, I've talked to staff, Mr. Mayor. I've talked to staff several times about taking money from one fund to another, or one area to another, and, you know. But my thought is, I'm not the financial manager of this organization. I'm making, I'm earmarking this money. It would be up to the professional staff to take it from the lower priority areas. You know, I mentioned one time the sidewalk deal, and everybody poo-pooed that idea for, for tasers. Well, the staff can find an area. I'm sure after, you know, we're borrowing, what, seven million dollars or eight million dollars for the CIP this year, as we do every year, can't we find fifty thousand dollars for immediate need? At least the three of us in that meeting, it was our impression that this is a dangerous situation, and we, they need immediate help. Hopefully, this will do it.
If I could follow up. What is the cost? I mean, is fifty thousand even close to enough? Is it too much?
Probably not, but it'll get it going. At least we get a dead center.
Mr. Mayor, that was one of the things during that meeting that the chief talked about, was the infrastructure and the ability to put cameras in that area if the infrastructure was even there to get it done. So no one really knew what the cost would be or anything else from a standpoint of the actual dollar amount. So that's why I made that comment, if it's something that is feasible. Because how much does it, is it really going to cost to actually get this done, was the question.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm just wondering, Michelle Weiner, Chief Financial Officer's thoughts on this? And I don't know if this is something, I mean, we're, we're talking about the CIP program here and what's already been in front of us for months, as far as the adoption of that now. And then here, Councilman Lynn, with all due respect, you throw this at us at the very end, and my question to Michelle, is this possible? Is this something that, that we should be doing? And also, is this not something that we should be looking at coming out of operating budget within the police department, within public safety? And we just finished talking in a work session about red light and speeding cameras, and if that gets adopted, the additional possible revenue that can come from that, that Chief Trowka had even talked about, tax relief or coming back to the city, which, you know, if you're talking about this, Councilman Lynn, it would be a prime use of that kind of money. And so I'm asking if, Mr. Mayor, if Michelle Weiner could speak to that.
Yeah, but before we get to that point, what I'm not hearing from folks is that we don't believe that we need to do everything that we can to make sure that our citizens feel safe in our community. So Councilman Lynn has come up with a suggestion from the meeting, the meeting that was held, to try to help deal with some of the challenges we may be, we may be facing out within the community. I think that's, that's correct, right?
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor.
And so the chief, there may be some additional need for some camera technology. But it also, Sandy, as far as, now, we don't necessarily need the networking to do what Councilman Lynn is asking, right? But we do need systematically, that would be the best thing that we can do, if I'm not mistaken.
It's slowly progressing.
But it is progressing.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Let me, let me finish. Okay. The, the challenge is, is given a playbook. The amount, this is, this is a surprise, because I'm trying to bring voices together and come up with a consensus or maybe a compromise. Although this is eleventh hour to come up with some type of compromise. The challenge is, do we know exactly from that meeting what's needed?
Dan Trowka, chief of police. Mayor, we don't. Matter of fact, I thought the best people to talk to about identifying how much we need is Sandy and the engineers over at Traffic.
So, but I'm also hearing things aren't moving fast enough, or it doesn't seem like it's moving fast enough, right?
When you talk to the citizens.
Well, not when you talk to the citizens. What we've been talking about with this network infrastructure.
Right.
Overall, within the community, creating that fiber backbone for us to be able to do exactly what we're talking about. It kind of seems like it's moving slow, but it's moving. So we, we may have to, if there's a particular need, and we got half of our council wanting to do something, I think we need to try to do something coming from the CIP. Yes, well, we go, Mr. Welper.
I'd like to hear from Michelle Weiner.
Instead of Michelle going back up and down doing squats, let me hear what he has to say first, and then we'll go there.
Mr. Lynn, I appreciate your hearts in the right place, as well as your other gentlemen who are part of that committee. The CIP program, as we know, the requests are like two, three times greater than we have money for, and every item that's on there is a legitimate need. So to come out at the eleventh hour, like, like Mr. Powers was saying, this is not, this is not the time to do it. You should have been doing this a long time.
You know, I wish you'd quit saying the eleventh hour. We had a meeting last week. Is there immediate need, according to the police chief? And I made a legitimate proposal. Vote on it. If you don't want to do it, say no.
That's what I'll do.
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't think public safety is a bad conversation. We'll go Sandy for cameras. We'll go Sandy for cameras, to get us up to date on where we're at, then we'll respond to Mr. Morrissey's question to the CFO, and then we'll go from there. But Sandy, can you talk about exactly where we're at? And what would it take to, to do the cameras in three areas, as was mentioned as well?
Sandy Greco, Inter and Public Works Director. First of all, right now, we have a consultant engineering firm working on our backbone of fiber, which is the whole crossroads area, San Martin area. We're making a big loop to connect everything back to City Hall. We will be connecting the fire station on the crossroads area. I don't know exactly where we are right now, I can, I can, actually, we could do a short work session in two weeks to update you exactly where we are on this. I don't know the locations you're talking about, and so if there is no fiber close to there, that could take a while, because we do have a project, and, and we're following that. I guess we need to sit down and, and maybe discuss that with Dan and Chris, and see where we are, but we can update you in a couple weeks to let you know exactly where we are.
So when you say you don't know where we're at, you mean as far as the physical locations? Because it's being done, but you just, the physical locations, how far, where?
Right.
Okay.
Right. We have a map, and I can supply everybody with our fiber map, and also, the police department has their requests in, on this map, so it's, it's pretty detailed, but it, it looks like we're not moving ahead, but we are, we are making progress. This is a very expensive and detailed project, and we do have a grant, so most of it is being paid for by funding that the city doesn't have to pay for. So, let me get all my updates, and we can have a quick work session.
And then, you said, so in two weeks or three weeks, we can have a work session to update council on where we're at?
Right.
All right. Who's on the public safety committee? Which council?
Us three.
Should've been a public meeting.
Don't tell.
Why don't we, but you, you had, you were invited by a resident, that was.
Correct.
Do we, do we have a task force right now set up to? 'Cause maybe, maybe, to be aggressive as a way that the councilman, I believe also, who's on the task force for?
We are.
I am.
And we haven't convened in a while, have we? I think, I think, to, to answer the call, we need to get that convened, we need to get folks meeting, and they need to, they need to have the authority to come back with recommendations to the bodies, so that we can move this, 'cause it, it does seem kinda like at a snail's pace, but, and I know it's not as easy as just doing that, but we need to get the task force together, if not this week, early next week, to adhere to what the councilman wants.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, maybe to kinda boil this down a little bit, we originally established two committees, and one had to do with the cameras in businesses. Councilman Powers and I dealt with that, and we kinda burned through that, and spent a lot of time, and ended up with maybe the result that the police department, not necessarily what they wanted, but, but we moved along, and we, we got to the accomplishment, whatever it was. This other committee, you know, if you go back to the conversation we had about the impact cameras have been having in the city of Dubuque, and not because Dubuque's doing this, this is what we've gotta do, but they seem to be very successful by everything we know, is that correct, Chief?
Yes.
So that was why we were kinda, I think, using that as some level of a prototype. But Dubuque was, is way ahead of us from an infrastructure standpoint, because they have had, you know, television issues over there from day one, because of their hillsides and everything. So they had all that in place, where we don't. And that's where, that's the big nut that we still have to figure out how to crack. So that's a big picture, long-term thing, but what this was, is a citizen in the fourth ward that basically just said he kinda had it with continuing conversation, those folks in certain areas of the community are concerned about sitting on their front porch without getting shot, or taking their dog for a walk. So I think the consensus with us three was $50,000, and I've gotta call into MediaCom to see if there's anything they can do from an infrastructure standpoint, that we can maybe partner with them, but even if we couldn't, if we just had to do the storing of what the camera captures on site, rather than connecting it to City Hall, which is what we'd wanna do long-term, I'm pretty confident we could get at least three places covered for far less than $50,000, but it would make a statement, and it would make an impact. And, you know, $50,000 is less than 1% of the CIP, just in case anybody's forgotten, that CIP that we approved tonight is not cast in stone. The staff makes changes all the time, that we prioritize, but I really think that this should be item number one, for us as a council member to do something about. I think $50,000 is a fairly minimal amount of money, but I do think it'd be making a statement, and that we are gonna start progressing down the road, so.
Right, and that's why I've been trying to keep the conversation alive, so that we can try to find somewhere to meet in the middle. The challenge is, is it 50, is it 25, is it 10,000, is it 20,000? And I guess we don't have a firm handle on that yet. I think it's absolutely important for us to venture and take a look into it. But before we go to Michelle, Councilman Powers, you have a question?
Just a question, I don't think anybody on this council has any less disregard for public safety. I think we all have that strong concern, what's going on, at least the perception, and, and quite frankly, the reality of what's going on throughout the city. We can move, I think Mr. Schmidt started to allude to it, we can move money around this program at any given time, to specifically set aside just one chunk number. I would like to have the, the staff to have the opportunity to continue to review, and bring us forth a idea of how much this may cost, because if it's, if we do 50, and we end up being short 25,000, and there's an ability to maybe move some money around beyond that, I think that we should at least give the courtesy to the staff to have the opportunity to review it, and to find the money within there, because of this issue that we all agree that there's, we've got to fix it. So that's where, that's where I'm at. I support public safety.
Yeah, I would probably say, if we're going to do it, you know, unfortunately, this would be the place to do it, because if we take it from general operating, that's going to, you know, you're talking about salaries, you're talking about a lot of other impacts, you know? So, Michelle, can you, Mr. Morrissey asked some question a while ago, with regards to, what was it? What was it, Councilman? What was the question?
Regards to her opinion on what, is this feasible, is it possible, and just her opinion on the amendment.
Michelle Wiener, Chief Financial Officer, and first of all, I think you'll all notice that the five-year capital improvements plan is submitted by Noel Anderson, the Committee Planning and Development Director, it's not submitted by the CFO. So I'm not, I'm not totally the team that would provide this response. However, I do get involved with it in working with the attorneys that draft the language about what's covered under what projects, when we sell bonds. We have already sold the bonds for, that we would typically sell for fiscal 18. I'm struggling to understand the timing, I don't really understand what either Sandy or Chief Trelka are saying, it doesn't sound to me like they're ready to go with the project, so I don't even know how much I need to go find for you right now. But we, certainly, we can work with it, we may have to have a reallocation hearing to take something away. I do sort of feel like it's your responsibilities, if you're going to tell us that we've got your priorities wrong, to tell us which one you don't want, but we can, we can certainly do that, and perhaps not do the, not take away the right thing, but we can do that, and I think I would leave further comments to Noel.
Mr. Anderson, you've sat, and you've soaked it all in like a sponge, you know, is there an up to, or is that a, take a look at whatever, three individual systems? I don't know, but.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, and it really comes down to a couple of things. Michelle noted that they've sold the bonds, and so those are categorized, and so without knowing exactly what this project would be, and what category it would be in of those bonds, obviously, it would be best to stay within, within the same bonding group. Again, within each group, and you can look through the CIP, specifically, the last section has on public facilities, each department that has allocated bonds through the plan also has the ability to, to change what they have in there, going through the process. So Chief Trelka has a good amount of funding in there for other police, public safety-type activities that, as an example, if they wanted to get one less car replaced this year, they would potentially have funds there, again, if it fit the same bond category, category of public safety. So each department head has that ability, even after approval of the CIP, to change some of their priorities in the process.
Hey, Chief, do you even have an estimate for what, a guesstimate, I mean, a rough guess, a roughtimate?
I do not, no, sir.
Yeah, just trying to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chief Trelka, that, those portable cameras, aren't those about $5,000 that we use sometimes?
We have several that we move around, and they are, I don't know the exact amount, but they are, they're expensive for us to maintain. I venture to say we're spending about $5,000 per year on them, if not more. And we have several of those that we utilize, that we like to move around from hotspot to hotspot, and.
About 15K, maybe.
This would help.
It's a compromise. I don't know where Noel's going to get it from, but I'd find, hopefully, somewhere for it to fit. But I mean, you know, folks, residents wanna see something happen, all council members do, it is, it, it really is the fourth quarter, but, you know, councilman has a concern, community has a concern. I think I hear it move from 50 to maybe 15 to start, to try to.
Split the difference in order to.
25. You know, you made a com-
Or you can get zero.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you made, you made the comment about, it's the fourth quarter. It is the fourth quarter, but somebody's gotta take the last shot, and we're gonna, I'm gonna take the last shot. These gentlemen with me are gonna take it, we're gonna take that shot, we may miss, but we're gonna try.
Well, and, and my goal is to make sure you don't miss.
Then let's, I'll, I'll change it to 25,000.
And you said 5,000, roughly?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're amending?
Amend amendment, amend the amendment, amended. Under, under words, 25,000, everything else the same. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Lynn, why can't we just let Sandy and the chief sit down, and Chris sit down, and by the time we have a next meeting, come up with something here, so that we have a chance, all of us on the council have a chance to look at what's being proposed, rather than an oral presentation here this evening, when we're wanting to adopt the CIP budget? I mean, why can't we do that, Councilman Lynn?
We can, but I've discovered on my time in the council, if we don't bind this to an amount, it's always the future, we're gonna do this.
What I'm suggesting, Councilman Lynn, is that we just turn to Kelly and, and the mayor, and say, in two weeks, we'd like to have this on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, let's call the vote.
Would you like to hear some language that may help out? I want it to pass, and I'm trying to work.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how to word it, other, other than just saying I'm earmarking it, because if I try to say.
Let me read this for you, if you don't mind, not to cut you off, so. It is to amend by earmarking 25,000 for community policing safety cameras.
Public safety cameras, yes. Isn't that, wouldn't that guide us into buying some cameras, or buying the infrastructure for some cameras, or?
There won't be the infrastructure on this, the infrastructure is, is being paid for by grant right now.
It'll buy.
It may buy some portable cameras, from what, from what he said, that are $5,000 apiece. So you said you had three areas that you and the resident had met about, that there's some concern, but that'll, that'll do what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, I like it. Mr. Mayor, again, I'm wanting to be able to see in front of me, and be able to ask questions about what all this involves, rather than three or four sentences this evening, about what we think it might do. I'm fully in favor of what the proposal is, but I want the mechanism to be something that is going to be accurate, and is going to be able to be researched by us on the council, who are making that decision.
Let me ask a question, this one is for the CFO. Ms. Wiener, if there is a earmark, does whatever get purchased have to come before the council for a vote?
That will depend upon what we're actually going to spend. If they're spending, if it's more than $1,000, less than 25,000, it would only go to the finance committee. If it's more than 25,000, it generally should be coming to council right now.
So if they find something, go out and look, public safety committee, or whatever committee comes forth with the proposal to council to do a work session, to tell exactly what's going to take place, then it will end up going to the finance committee, or full council?
Correct, either, either way. It, it should, if they follow their processes properly, you put that qualification on there.
So, would you, the language is probably better that way. Mr. Lynn, I think, but it's up to you, if you wanna, if you're ready to call the question again, we can utilize what you had, or if, I don't know how this is going to go yet.
Can you read that again, Mr. Mayor?
It is to amend by earmarking 25,000 for community policing public safety cameras.
And hearing that, that means that you don't have to utilize the CIP funds in order to be able to do that, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor, what I'm, I'm proposing, taking, we're, it's our obligation to approve the CIP program, and of course, it's our discretion to make changes to that program. So I'm trying to make a very small change for public safety, 'cause three of us identified immediate need, so let's just vote on it.
We're voting on finding $25,000. It started out at 50, there's a compromise at 25. The, we'll put together that task force, or whoever, collection of you guys to meet, work with the chief, and come back to the council to make a presentation about what they found, and then bring it back to either the council or the finance committee, whichever monetary level it reaches, so that is a compromise.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could, just real quickly, I'd also, to Mr. Morrissey's comment, I certainly appreciate the ideal condition of being able to put a little more study into this, but, you know, Church Road neighborhood would be, I'm pretty sure, one of the neighborhoods that would get one of these cameras. And for the last three or four or five years, we've talked about doing something, and I think we are making progress with Sandy's group, but it's a long, slow process, and this is more of a quick fix, and this is more of something that I, I think, or we believe, would have a more immediate impact. We're talking now about, I think roughly, 1/3 of 1% of the CIP, and the purpose of this is to lock this in, rather than talking about, yeah, yeah, we're gonna get there, we're gonna do that, and today never, or tomorrow never comes. So I think doing this, and, and maybe we find out that this is a great idea, and we need to spend some more money on it, but I think it's a first- But I think it's a first step, and I think it's the first step we need to take.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I, living in Church Road, I know that there have been problems there, and that I appreciate the, the chief and the police department and what they've done to lower the crime rate over there, especially serious violent crime over there. But at the same time, I, I, I do want a accounting of this, and if we're gonna take 25,000, then where is it gonna come from? What, is there some kind of program that's gonna suffer? And I think that we need to know what that is. Now, if this is approved, and we come back and have to approve, you know, 25, 28,000 or whatever it ends up being, will we know at that point in time where this money is coming from in the CIP?
We have to, we, because we'll have to potentially reallocate, so you'll know where it comes from.
We know what will be cut. What area would be cut?
More than likely, we will know that.
Well in advance?
We will know that when we get there.
Okay.
But, like I said, it's not a, a perfect process. I think there is a concern. We have a strategic plan also that talks about policing as well. We started out at 50, we're halfway in the middle now, and I'll be honest, I can't necessarily say I like getting a request right now, but you have to respect it, and I think this is a pretty decent compromise. But ultimately, it's, it's the majority of you that decides what we do, but this is a compromise, and something I've been looking for, for about the last 18 months. So, Madam Clerk, this is to, to approve, is it to, so to make the-
To approve the amendment?
To approve the amendment. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item passes. Now we have the actual motion that's on the floor for the capital improvements and adopting it. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Wow. All right, all right. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, which is a request by Prime R E L L C for a major site plan amendment in the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 12,160 square foot retail commercial building and 71-stall parking lot located north of 2060 Crossroads Boulevard.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close hearing.
Second.
And approve the recommendation.
And, yes, and approve the recommendation of planning, programming, and zoning commission.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance approving the request by Prime R E L L C for a major site plan amendment to allow for the construction of a 12,160 square foot retail commercial building and a 71-stall parking lot located north of 2060 Crossroads Boulevard.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor, but one quick question. Are we doing any kind of development agreement with this development?
No.
In other words, are there any incentives?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. It is located within the Crossroads Tiff District, but to date, we have not received any final, final numbers to craft a development agreement yet.
If, if we didn't do a development agreement, they would still get KIRA?
It is not located within the KIRA, no.
Oh, that's right, it's in a Tiff. So right now, there's no development agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, this is the site plan for this, okay. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we have a timing question.
Crossroads is probably that one.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I know they would like to get it under construction this season. I don't believe they've started the, the final design or anything yet, but they're, because they're waiting for the zoning action before they actually finalize their number, so I think they are very anxious to get it approved.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Item carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on request by QuickTrip Incorporated for a major site plan amendment in the M-2P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of a biodiesel blending facility located directly west of 2010 West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Are there any comments on file?
There's no comments on file.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of planning, programming, and zoning commission.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending ordinance number 5079, as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property located directly west of 2010 West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Questions? I think they've been waiting a while to get this done. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Thank you. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number five's a motion, receive and file proof of publication of the notice of a public hearing that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located adjacent to 157 Washington Street to Jason Grimm.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing's open. Clerk, any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, like to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located adjacent to 157 Washington Street to Jason Grimm in the amount of $2,000, and authorize the city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Jason Grimm for the sale and sale of property located adjacent to 157 Washington Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that is a lease agreement with Tower Company 2013 LLC to place 190-foot-tall monopole cellular tower and related equipment on excess city-owned right-of-way located near the intersection of West Congress Street and River Road east of 310 West Congress Street, and leasing the site for a period of five years with the option to renew for up to 19 additional five-year terms for $800 a month.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution approving a lease agreement with Tower LLs 2013 LLC to place 190-foot-tall monopole cellular tower and related equipment on excess city-owned right-of-way located near the intersection of West Congress Street and River Road east of 310 West Congress Street, and leasing the site for a period of five years with the option to renew for up to 19 additional five-year terms for $800 a month.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Am I able to do seven and eight together?
Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Lynn?
Both of them?
Just one of them.
Okay. I move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, which is the fiscal year 2017 rehabilitation of taxiway Charlie at Waterloo Regional Airport bid package number one of two FAA grant number 45.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is now open. Is there anyone that has partic, is there anyone that has any comments about this particular item? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution confirming approval, plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to airport director for review.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
The estimate for this project was $1,995,276.89. Our first bidder was Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $2,296,639. Second bidder was Kay Cunningham Construction Company Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $2,265,399. up to 19 additional five-year terms for $800 a month.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution approving a lease agreement with Tower LLC to 2013 LLC to place a 190-foot tall monopole cellular tower and related equipment on excess city-owned right-of-way located near the intersection of West Congress Street and River Road east of 310 West Congress Street, and leasing the site for a period of five years with the option to renew for up to 19 additional five-year terms for $800 a month.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
That item carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive and file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to airport director for review.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Um, the total bid estimate for this project was $595,870. We had one bidder, it was Asper Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their total bid amount was $575,859.35.
All right, thank you. Could someone take nine, 10, and 11, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wupper.
If you like, I can add 12 to that as well.
Sure.
Uh, number nine is a resolution authorizing city clerk to certify against certain parcels of unpaid garbage and sewer and stormwater fees. Ten is a resolution approving the renewal of property insurance for a total premium of $299,123 with Chubb Insurance. Number 11 is a resolution approving an agreement with Umbrella Insurance for a total premium of $244,420 with Brit Insurance. Number 12 is a resolution approving renewal of general, cyber, and auto liability, law enforcement, public officials, and errors and omissions for a total premium of $855,123 with Travelers Insurance.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Any questions about these items?
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. Did, Kelly, did the insurance committee review these?
Yes, the insurance committee met earlier in June to review the renewals.
Oh, yes. Any other questions, counsel? Madam Clerk? On nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that was item carries. Uh, 13, 14, and 15.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item 13 is adopting a resolution approving annual renewal agreement with Safety National at a cost not to exceed $179,106 per year to provide workers' compensation, stop-loss coverage, and $22,238 to alternative service concepts for claims administration. 14 is adopting a resolution approving grant application to the RJ McElroy Trust in the amount of $10,000 to fund a conceptual plan for the Lincoln Park Improvements Project. And item number 15 is adopting a resolution approving award of contract to Plum Tech, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, an amount not to exceed $19,556 in conjunction with the replacement of two roof-mounted air conditioning units for the general aviation terminal building at the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize the airport director to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Any questions about these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a little overview on item number 14 regarding Lincoln Park?
All right, Mr. Hudding.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. We were approached, our staff, by some downtown business people who are interested in seeing some improvements in the park across the street, and also were contacted by McElroy Trust, and they've got an interest primarily, as most of you probably know, they focus heavily on children and serving children. And that park is used for a lot of kids' activities. You go, go by there any day of the week in the summer, and there are kids groups doing things in there. But, uh, long, long story short, this came to us as a request, both a request and an offer. A request to think about some improvements to a park that we've had for, that's one of our very first parks, haven't done major improvements for over 30 years. It's a nice park, well-used, uh, it's not unsightly or anything, but it's a little bit tired. So, um, basically, taking up an offer, of course, it'll have to be scored and approved and everything, but to hire a firm to bring all the stakeholders together, and there are many of them, everything from all the festivals that happen down there to all the youth groups and agencies serving them, bring all those people together, and then try to come up with a meaningful conceptual plan for what we might do to improve the park.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? 13, 14, and 15.
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, someone? Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number 16, a resolution approving award of contract to Pella Roofing of Vinton, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $65,995 for base bid and alternative bid number one for improvements